Good evening, everyone. We are meeting this evening. Is that my noise? Or someone resting correctly? Okay, all right. It was, this is a workshop on our council rules and procedures and the proposed revisions, and I'm going to go ahead and let Michael pick it off.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate that. Tonight, we are going to be walking through the rules and procedures for the council. The rules and procedures were initially codified in a single document by Mayor Val Carr back in 2020. And we have had a few suggestions from council over the past couple of years to make some changes to that. So we have a series of 12 changes we're going to be going through tonight. And are basically just looking for a consensus from you all, and then we will bring back a resolution with all the approved changes at a later date. So Sarah, I hate to break it, but I don't think it's gonna work. Is it on? Have I tried? Maybe. Please stand by.
There we go.
Wow, it took a minute. All right, there we go. Thank you, sir. So back in May of last year, we had the council retreat, and one of the items we discussed was updates to this document. And we made a list at the time staff did of all the revisions. And the majority of what you'll see tonight is the consensus that came from that retreat. We've noted a couple other things that have come up since that time, included those here as well. Many of these things are just to improve clarity of the rules and procedures. In some cases, there's some inconsistency with the rules and procedures in our city charter. And just some of them are to make the council meetings move a little bit more quickly and smoothly.
The lasagna is worth taking a D to enjoy, by the way.
So kind of the ground rules for this evening is, as we see them, we would and we'll bring back a resolution. Some of these items have recommendations from staff, things that are a little more cut and dry. Just to make things more clear and to ensure consistency with other city policy. Some of them are just kind of more preferences of you all, and do you want to do these things or not? Staff is relatively indifferent. And we will note as such, you'll see recommendation on some slides versus just questions on the slides. All right. So with that said, we will jump right into it. Number one, how do items get on the agenda? This one was meant to be a little bit more cut and dry. We wanted, I think this came from the retreat back in May, we wanted to make sure that the rules and procedures not too hard to read. So we're going to strip out a couple of kind of confusing provisions in section seven. I'll bring that up on the next slide. And this is just to add clarity, who can add items to the agenda and how. So what that looks like in practice here, we do recommend this just because it is kind of a cleanup measure instead of making some decisions to change how we do things. What we would strip out just for clarity is that the mayor and another council member can add something to the agenda. You all will recall that a mayor is part of the council and is thereby a council member, and that's covered by number four there. And then the clarity for number five is, we went back and forth on this earlier today. The city manager clerk or attorney can place items on the agenda already. And generally, if we need to place something on there for the benefit of the council, we will. And then this
Michael, that's the only question I had. Yeah, so there is some other place that allows you or to get it on because
Great, great point. We had that question as well. We said the answer to that is this is the council rules and procedures. And the charter allows us as the officers to do that. Great question.
Yeah, I didn't want to eliminate because you put together most of the
That's right. We would have a lot shorter meeting. So if you want to do that. Yeah, absolutely. Manager needs a consensus. No, that'll be for next round, maybe. So again, this is for clarity, just to clean up because they're kind of at odds and hard to understand. So because I don't have a summary slide at the end, I would ask for consensus on these things as we're going through them. And between Jeff and I, we'll try and answer your questions and Sue's.
Again, I don't know. There's attorney putting things on there.
Get it out of the way early. Sounds like we have a consensus. Okay. Very good, counsel. We're on the way. Very good. All right. Tie vote procedure. This is another a little bit more significant, but also what turns out to be a housekeeping cleanup item. The tie vote provision, we encountered this a few weeks ago with potential appointment to the planning commission. We had a tie vote. As it turns out, charter is kind of at odds with our rules and procedures. And Jeff can explain that better if need be. But the charter wins, and so we need to make sure that our rules and procedures reflect what the charter says. Charter says that a majority of, a majority vote is needed to advance an item. There is no other language around tie votes being brought back. Therefore, a tie vote fails. And we would like to, as we used to say, consistify the two documents.
Now, of course, any two of you could bring back that.
Right.
Okay, okay. Because I mean, if you think about where you can have a tie vote, it means a council member wasn't here normally. Was not voting that could come back and be the tie breaker. Yeah, okay.
Remind me, Jeff, this is just for boards and commissions, or is this for also ordinances and also for council and ordinances as well? Yes.
All right. So I think that's the only slide on that one is council. Okay with making that change. Okay. All right. So limit content of council reports. I think we've actually been doing this in practice. We've tightened it up over the past year or so. Right now, in the rules and procedures, you have these four bulleted points on things that y'all can talk about. And that's a report on meetings or events outside of the municipal of outside municipal boards and groups, which you all are members to announce community-wide events, to introduce citizen concerns or inquiries about citizen services and to make info requests that can be quickly and easily addressed by us staff at the meeting or by later communication. I don't know why. You can also bring items here to, if it's in the bottom, bring items back for a future agenda too, if there's a second council member. Guess we missed that one. But it is a reminder to not use that section to mean to make political statements, to respond or refute to previous actions or comments. Or to comment about actions or comments of a fellow council member. And there's another later or above in that same session, rather than section six is similar language. This is one of those just kind of questions for you. Do you all feel the need to change what can be mentioned during reports?
I don't. I think it helps keep politicking off the dais.
Have we kind of been consistent with that?
I think you guys have done a really good job.
Stepped up.
No.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, we wouldn't make any change on this. Y'all have already been going, going to the letter on this one. So it sounds like we have a consensus to no change needed on this.
Although it's not broken, let's fix it.
Yeah, we are government. All right. Let's see. So again, this is kind of more of a stylistic thing for y'all. We have a very formal prescription here for how you address one another. I guess I could have put together a recommendation on this to make it more simple, but you could just strike this whole thing if you wanted to and just address each other however you want. I don't know if Jeff has a recommendation on alternatives, but
Calm down.
I hear you all addressing each other as council member and mayor. The bar, I mean, that's what I hear all the time.
Sometimes we use each other's first names, but it's just easier sometimes. So, but I don't feel disrespected by anyone up here at all.
Do you, do you want to prescribe how to address one another at all? Then one of these next ones, we're just going to say, just remove the whole section.
I think you could
City grows to 50,000, we start getting paid.
Right.
That's normal and serious.
Right.
I know it's serious, but you don't know each other.
I mean, you literally can strike most of it and just say, address each other respectfully. Yeah.
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 When the mayor is going to control it, I mean, truthfully. Hillary, you, you today as the mayor, you can control it if it gets out of hand.
Yeah.
Yeah. And remind him, please, if somebody's saying something nasty or something, you can just say, okay, start addressing me for that particular meeting until it passes on. But
Yeah.
To have, you know, overreach, like telling us when we know we all call each other by our first names is
Right. Yeah. Well, we all kind of know each other too. So we're more comfortable with each other. Yeah. So I think it kind of just depends on on the
I think the real issue, and I'm not for changing it. I'd rather keep it, we can watch the first name, but the real issue is that you're public. We have different groups of people come in when something is important to them.
Sure.
They don't know who we are. And so you say council member Neil or council member Mackay or whatever. Then, then they know, you know, so a lot of times they'll address us that way in the paper too. They'll say, David said, he didn't agree with whatever.
Right.
Like, who's David?
No, I'm using my gang name.
Which, okay.
Well, I mean,
That's the intent of why you would do that.
Yeah, I mean Suzanne always calls us council members. So I mean, they're going to know who we are. Respectfully, no, I'm not yet. And it's small enough town. Most people that have any think know our names. So I think if we just put a dialogue and be respectful.
Yeah, if there should be any rule, what you're saying, it should just be respectful.
Be respectful.
Respectfully address each other.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's fine in the state. I really do.
I only have one comment about it, and that is, I know in in the halls of government, according to Robert's Rules of Order, you address the chair. So you don't get into personality issues. So you stay on topic. So I wonder, I wonder why we never, we don't do that. Why don't we say, you know, Madam Chair, the speaker or whoever it is, that the, the addressing of the comments, go to the chair. And that adds a certain level of distance between personality clashes. So I don't know whether that's important to you guys or not, but it can certainly diffuse that personality. Intensity of personalities on a topic rather than focusing on the chair and getting your point across to the chair. Jeff, is that, is that what they do in other?
That's certainly within your prerogative, obviously. That's the way they do it at the Capitol. Ever been the committees of legislature, everybody goes through the chair.
So how did, how does Salida and all the other little small towns do it?
They keep the germ that they go council member and that's the
Well, I mean, we try, but you start talking and it's just, it's, it's easy to just
That's true. Right. We should just keep it this way and
But yeah, I mean, to have it, to have it this strict, like if you, if you slip up, you're like in trouble. It's kind of silly. It's kind of silly.
I just, I bring it up as a protocol for when things get testy.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, to have that as a default gives a chair more authority when it gets hot. Not that we ever disagree.
I don't think it needs to be quite this strict, but I don't care whether it stays or whether you just put forms of address should be respectful. Yeah, you know, I mean, because any one of us can call each other out by saying, yeah, we can point of order. Black respect, you're addressing each other.
Yeah.
All right.
And I, all of us call each other by our first names. We all say our last names. We all say council members. Sometimes I forget your last name. I'm just like, yes, dated what?
All right. We will settle for you there.
Yeah.
Think about it.
You, you, you.
I mean, we've
Yes, you.
Michael, we call you by your first name and Jeff, we call you by yours and Suzanne.
I'd like to be referred to as city clerk LeClaire, please.
Very good. See clerk LeClaire.
Suzanne. We say the clerk Leclerc, the clerk.
Clerk, clerks.
All right. The next one. I think it goes to sleep after a certain amount of time. All right. That's, thank you, Sarah. All right, we got, we got four down. This one could be simple or not. How prescriptive do we want to be on where we all sit at the dais? This is quite prescriptive and how we do things. Again, this is a stylistic question for you all. Do you want to keep it as a status quo, council all going down one side? Quite often, it's council alternating, alternating down the side of the mayor. You know, this is, this is just a comfort, comfort thing for y'all.
In, in my opinion, the only thing is, it's really easy for me to look one way when you're all talking. Robert, I don't care that you sit over there, but sometimes it's hard because I don't, I think the public perception can be that I'm not looking at you intentionally. And it's not my intent. It's just that I'm, I'm paying attention to whoever's talking over here, but you happen to be sitting over there. So if you were grouped over here, it doesn't look disrespectful on my part. And that's just my opinion of like the public's perception of when you sit over there, it looks like I am purposely turning my back to you. And I'm not. It's just the way you're located.
I don't, I don't feel offended in any way. But I, to me, it's more my, my sense of what I'd like to see is the public and the cameras look at, at council. And when you have it just all going down one side, that's not council. The body of council should be, in my opinion, should be in the center here. So you should have perhaps just a thought, you should have the mayor in the center, the pro temp to the right, the attorney to the left. And then alternate your council members to either side of that. And then Michael could choose where he wants to be on the, past that. But that, we're the body. We are, we are what the discussion is. And so it just seems lopsided to me the way that we're doing it. That's my comment.
Text from the judge.
You, you want to steer out to the public.
I don't think you watch the reactions. I don't think you see unless I'm like inside this, but I can't see the So I don't like, I don't care what we do. It's not, I'm not dying on the poor court, but I feel like the council should sit up there. And the city manager and the attorney, you know, give advice. It's all, it's all public matter. So the council shouldn't be sitting. Nothing you can sit there and defend with all these emails. Feel like I have, you know, what you said there about being able to see the audience. We are the centerpiece. It's, I mean, I, when I watched this last time, when I was working last this side was getting cut off. It was just showing, you know, from, yeah, from right about half of Rusty sometimes and then over to Michael sometimes. You know, I guess I've already gone downhill on it, but
Recording any progress.
You should just sit in front and center of our approach here. As in, and I can see each other side by side. This is my thing.
Well, I'll we're getting feedback from somewhere. Mine is off.
I want to see Don Buzel not there.
It sounds like it's
City clerk LeClaire's issue.
Is somebody going to zoom on? It tests one to my Hello, 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 hello.
I just have three more. Thank you. David, one thing, can I ask you to use your money? I have people saying this. Thank you.
Better now.
She's going to promote me to kind of change.
Hello, hello.
So I think that the council should be, hello.
There you go.
Just turn it off. Turn your mic off.
I'll see what happens.
Test. Any feedback? A little bit still. What if we all turn ours off and see? Okay, any feedback? Yep.
Yeah, but some of these speakers on. There's a speaker that's on over there.
Test, test. There's a speaker. It's a computer speaker. Well, I'm not on the
Oh, that's yet.
Yeah.
Yeah. Test, test. It's coming on monitors. Yeah. Somebody's computer is broadcasting. Test, test. There we go.
Okay, David.
Okay.
Your mic's on.
All right. So I was saying that I think the council should be sitting around the center of the dais to be the centerpiece to the public so that they can see us and we can see them. I stare at the city clerk Claire. So
She's the best one.
Yeah. So like I said, not going to die on my sword for this, but but that's what I really feel like we should be the centerpiece and we should be able to read our our crowd to see what's going on, you know, because I know that I don't sitting on this corner. If anybody was right here, they're really staring that way.
Well, do you want to move?
Hard to be that way.
Do you want to move next to Robert? But I mean, it still kind of puts you in the same, because the only, we'd have to move Michael. And the one thing is, no matter who the mayor is, having the attorney next to them, I think is critical.
Yeah.
Not necessarily for when you guys are talking, but when the public comes up and they start something.
Right.
Yeah. Like if you're not sure of how to run that meeting or that moment, you need to be able to turn to them and say, uh, and you don't want to yell it from here to there so that everybody's I mean, it's still public information, but oftentimes it's nice to say, can I say something or, you know, he can say it.
Totally get it. So anyways, that's my thought on it.
So what if Michael came here and then
Yeah, I mean, I'll chime in and support David. Every, every political committee, when you watch from the national level down, it's always a back and forth around the presiding officer. If you look at jury courtroom juries, you have the, the, the chick, what is the foreman? And normally there is some form of a rank ordering, at least in the military juries. If there is a sequence around it, just like alphabetically, they, they do that intentionally because they try to keep the focus right there at the chair and not lose sight of the, you know, the tails that get left out in the dark. So I agree with what you're saying and what you're saying, Robert.
But of course, if you do it alphabetically, I always am at the end, have been all my life. So
Sarah can control the camera. She can make it look anywhere we want it to look. So we don't have to sit somewhere just because of the camera.
No, but you can't see from the corners. You're So if you focus your camera, is there a shot you can get that can get all of council if we were centered around the mayor?
And we can also, we have a series of preset positions for the cameras, I recall, and we can reset those. Maybe not for tonight, but for the future, we can, we can do new angles.
I'm okay if I'm never on camera. So
You're stuck.
So you could just focus camera that way.
But if David were over there, you, you then could move it so that that's not the endpoint, right?
Can you get between Rusty and me in one shot? Because if Michael is to the side of either of us there, that would get, oh no. Actually, Kelly's not here. Kelly's not here.
Right.
Yeah, we will figure, we'll figure out the technical side. I, I'm wondering to myself, we could move these TVs to the outer walls at some point.
The zoom. Oh, yeah. I noticed during the planning commission, it blocked.
It's, you look at this room and it is difficult to get a perfect location, but
Yeah.
Oh, you put it there and there, you may be able to look across the dice. No, no promises, but we'll, we'll ask.
We'll inquire about that.
Tilt your, tilt ours in and theirs.
I can look over there and down here. The values are over there. I'm not sure.
So do we have a consensus?
So yeah. Don't, don't worry about the AV. We'll figure it out. But if you all have
I don't.
This is a personality thing for Val.
Yeah. Well, Val didn't want any staff up here.
I know, I know.
So And I prefer, I like having the city manager because oftentimes there's questions or presenters or somebody saying something and I can sense or see that Michael is shifting and he has, or you know, the, any one of you, it's not just Michael, but I like them being able to be aware of the room and be able to participate because oftentimes he knows answers we don't know. Or he can smooth something over a lot faster than any of us can. So
Don't you see him, but like Suzanne, don't you see that better in a line of sight though, rather than to you?
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind. I don't mind if Michael moved, but I don't want, I don't want Suzanne or Michael or the attorney down there. Because they are our three highest functioning staff members. We are constantly, you know, I mean, I'm constantly, I'm, I'm looking at Suzanne, like, is this right? Am I doing? Like, are they, are we on, what's, and she knows, Michael knows things that, you know, because oftentimes if staff is presenting or I'll notice that we might say something, maybe we shouldn't be. And I can pick that up from him. So I just think it's important that they're up here. In what order, I think the city attorney should be next to the presiding officer. But that's primarily for dealing with public issues so that we don't get The presiding officer, but that's primarily for dealing with public issues so that we're, we don't get ourselves in trouble. So. And that's happened. I mean, we haven't gotten in trouble, but there have been many times where we have something kind of chaotic happening and I can turn and say. Do I just let this go? Or should I, and he'll say, hmm, let it go. And I can just let it, you know. I don't have to fumble before knowing, like, I think it just makes the meetings more professional and. Quicker. In making judgment calls, especially, especially very volatile ones. So. But, but if Michael wanted to swap with one of you guys, but we still have Kelly who's missing, so somebody's gonna get cut off.
Where someone else can move on this side, another council member.
Yeah. Yeah.
That would be fairly, I mean, actually, that would be balanced.
I mean, literally, if I could just not be on camera, I would be. I didn't have to comb my hair.
So if we did it alphabetically, we could bring David, if you would be willing, we could have you come to this side.
Yeah, it's up to, if you guys want to make sure you're on camera for stuff, I don't.
I don't think it's on camera. I think it's more seen on.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah.
And I can't pay attention to you guys and have comment, commentary with you guys. And then read my audience.
But that seat is the same as that seat.
Exactly. That's my point.
So, so.
No.
So, so the only way it would work is if you moved Michael.
Guys this way right now.
Is to move Michael, but then there's still someone who's got to have.
Oh, that's right.
And seat because Kelly, the mayor pro tem, no matter who the mayor and mayor pro tem are, they should. Oh, yeah. So somebody's gonna wind up in a seat where you're not looking dead on at the audience. If, if we could trade, I'd just trade. I'm mostly paying attention to you guys, so, but.
What is the play of when they come up for public comment, just the way the podium is, it's almost oriented. More.
Yeah, we could always move the podium to the center.
In court, we have the podium in the middle.
Yeah, where it would be centered, but right now it's positioned as though the council's here, so they're directing their.
Right.
To the council.
Okay, I, I saw Colorado Springs stairs is pretty straight across, so everybody faces the audience. So I guess what we'll have to do. Is we'll have to raise taxes so we can build a new building and we'll get a building big enough for us and we can all sit and stare at the crowd. And not say anything and I'm comfortable silencing, see if somebody says something. Council member, could we compromise and just move the podium to the middle? Would that save us a dollar or two? Maybe, I don't know.
Yes, I just want to specify that you don't necessarily have to raise taxes to do all that disclaimer.
That's true, we don't.
Before work gets out.
So do we have a temporary fix? A temporary fix or this?
No, I don't think.
I strive that, I mean.
You can test it out.
Doesn't sound like, I mean, I can move there, that's fine.
Well, I mean, they're, they're right. If Kelly was here, even if, even if Michael moved down. And I'm sitting there and he's sitting there, somebody.
There will be somebody, but you do have better balance and it'll perhaps be better than being on the very slightly better, I don't know, but.
Yeah, it won't be you sitting at the end, it'll be Robert. Because you'll be sitting, you'll be sitting where Michael is sitting. Robert will be sitting where Robert is sitting.
Unless we do it by seniority.
And then, and then Michael would be sitting up there, so.
I was thinking we could do it by good looks, I'll just sit right.
The other thing is we could alternate at each council meeting, we could. Change it up, I mean.
That seems like too much energy and thought to.
Then I want to be mayor next one.
Anyone can sit here.
And then I want to be the lawyer.
Yeah, I want a shot at that seat.
No other council in the world has staff sitting there in the meeting, they're sitting at the end. This is the only city council that's since broken up. I'm surprised.
Well, we're not technically sitting broken up until Robert went over there. We were all on. One side, right?
Yeah, council is always together. So. I mean.
In my first two years, in my first years, we didn't have this problem. What, what, what's different? What are we doing since?
We used to have, we used to have every seat up here was taken.
That's what I was gonna say.
Because we had the entire, well, the depart, the chief of police, I would sit. I would sit where Michael would sit there, I sat where you were. Chief of police, public works director, finance director.
Yeah, that's how it used to be. Yeah.
Well, I, I, I like what Frank is saying, though. I don't. This is a council meeting. It's not a city staff meeting, it's a council meeting. And the business is council, so I, I think it should be council here and if you want to have the. I mean, I'm not saying I'm opposed to you guys sitting here, but I think the, that the way the seating should go should certainly be the central part of it is council.
I, if, if I may, I, I'm not comfortable with having more than the bare minimum of staff up here. I think it sends the wrong message. And I heard that when I first got here and was not a fan, in my experience. The three of us, as our staff, additional directors, I, I don't think that's on the table here. I would prefer you all not. But in, in my experience, my previous city was mayor. Attorney, manager, flanking the mayor on either side, and then the council going down on both sides.
Yeah. There are other staff that sit with council, Frank. We're not the only.
And that's, that's not to argue, it's just to throw another idea out there, Colorado Springs, the, I believe, staff sits on a side table and the council is all.
There are some that do and some that don't, yeah. I think that's a fair statement.
You can, you can do it any way you want. You don't hurt my feelings if you want to. I think it might be an improvement to have someone here and I could be there, just, just maybe by a little bit.
I found when.
Running everybody off at that one.
I found when staff sat down there, our meetings were more disjointed because I, I sat here through that. And we sat here with really long pauses for Val to get the city manager's attention. And then the city manager to start to look up or pay attention to what was being asked because they were down there and apart from what was happening. Because once you're separated, you're not paying attention anymore. And that's just the way it is. Like if people are presenting down there, I can guarantee you that half my council is not paying attention. They're doing something else.
I'm mostly.
And, and not always be out of disrespect. It's that after, you know, something's gone on for quite a while, you're. Somewhere else.
And that's why we always ask the staff, when they're presenting, we ask them to come to the podium.
Right.
For that reason, because it's easier for you guys to listen than when they're sitting at the tables.
And the three people who help this meeting function. Are right here that are staff members. So they've got to be on it and paying attention to what's going on. So in, in my opinion as mayor. And I rarely use that, but in my opinion, these three people are critical to this meeting functioning smoothly. And I would like them to remain up here. How they remain, I don't care, but I do think the city attorney is most helpful to whoever is presiding over the meeting. And especially, and this is not to knock Mayor Pro Tem in any sense, but she doesn't have the same experience that I have. No, you know. No matter, and no matter how experienced you are, when you're sitting up here and there's like heat of the moment things happening, it really helps to have. A professional who really knows the rules, who has sat through numerous meetings that you can turn to and say, uh. I'm not sure. And they can tell you, because no one else up here, I can't turn to anyone else and say, uh, I can't turn to Kelly and say, uh. Because Kelly will say, uh, back.
And I'll say, uh.
You know. So, so having this, the city attorney here, I think is critical because if I'm not here running it and Kelly is and Kelly's not sure what to do. Or if Kelly and both of I were asked and I don't know how the meeting would be run, but somebody needs this person's help, whether it's Jeff or Nina. So, and then. Michael, I feel like it's critical because he participates a lot in the meeting and he knows a lot of the agenda and answers that we don't always have. So I like him. On the spot and available and, and, and awake and ready. Because when you're sitting down there, I can promise you, you are not awake and ready.
Yeah.
Because you're not in the spotlight, you know.
I never saw him doze on the podium.
No, that's what I mean. That's the point, that's the point. Yeah. So if, if you guys want to move sides. Or if you would like, you know, to swap a little with Michael, but he still remains up here. I don't care how that pans out.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about them moving down to the floor.
Yeah. But I still think the attorney should remain.
Yeah, I think the attorney should, should definitely sit to the.
Because also they can say something sometimes to the public that I can't and. They're not going to get the heat, the same kind of heat that you or I would get. For saying something. So I like that they can participate quickly.
So. If it's, if it's consensus, I'd propose that we do the alternating, the ma, the mayor, the attorney, the pro tem on the other side and the rest of us alternate. What that looks like, if it gets problematic, David, if we, I'm sorry, council member. Maybe we can alternate the wings or something.
Yeah.
And I would also propose that we put the podium in the middle. That would, because that's always such an odd stretch. They will see us because oftentimes. You know, you'll ask somebody a question and they'll look up because they hear. They hear this, I don't, we don't know where they hear the sound from, but.
Right.
But they don't get it, but if they're there, they're gonna see their lips moving.
If the podium isn't, man, I can't believe we spent so much time on this. If I know podium was in the center. Does the camera see that person like they do over there?
No, they'll see the back of their head only.
Right, so I think there's a reason why we.
Oh, there's no camera up here?
No.
Yeah, I think that's the reason they don't have it in the center.
But he said he could fix all the AV.
We'll figure it out.
There's a lot of move cameras.
What about that camera up there?
I don't think that one's in operation anymore.
Let's keep its eye on us. Yeah, to keep an eye on the back of our heads.
If I just made them demonstrate. The reason we always have them present here is because. Back in the day, they'd use their.
Their laptops.
Right? And so then they're presenting here and they're seeing on the screen here. What they're presenting, because it's hard to replicate this when you're presenting.
Yeah.
Right? And so this was also a convenience for the presenter that they could, you said.
Yeah.
Testing this pretty soon. We tested it today. Putting the flash drive in and the presenter being able to look at the screen here and use it and move it and all of that. That was the only other.
All that can get moved. That could get moved to in the front though, couldn't it? Anyway, you guys figured it out. It would, it just would be.
Cameras move, but the physical location of the camera to the location of the podium, it would, the camera would actually physically have to be moved, even though it doesn't pan in or out. Well, it does, but it wouldn't, it would still be behind them. You wouldn't see. Right.
We have court, we have them stand. These tables are pushed back and we stand here.
Right, because they're not on camera.
But they're not on camera, yeah.
They're not on camera.
Not on court, no. We used to be able to do this. I don't know why we can't do it anymore.
Because I, yeah, I thought the podium used to be in the middle back in the days.
You need Rob back, that's on.
What do you guys want? Do you want it in the middle? I mean.
I don't care. I don't care.
I mean, for, for, you know, Suzanne.
I mean, if, if. Whatever you guys want to do. Well, you know that the advantage to the podium where it's at too is if the presenter has an issue, Suzanne's right there. To help as well, so.
Are you on?
No, I mean, I do help them a lot, like.
But if you're right there.
Maybe just have it in another room and then they could have the camera on them. You could see them from these big huge TV screens.
That doesn't have the same emotional effect for me.
So we, we will, we'll experiment with that. We'll, we'll see what we can figure out.
David, do you want to move over here then? And Michael?
I'm fine. We're gonna.
These spaces are so large.
I, I mean, only, never mind.
I mean. Then it just. Rusty, that's your original seat, right? Where David is now. So just, yeah, you'd just be back in your normal seat. Right, and I would be here. Yeah.
Well, that's the other question is, do you, do you want to do it alphabetically? My old study did it by seniority when you were voted in. It matters not to me and I started further complicate this, but. But again, this comes up itself. I don't know if you have a preference. Those who have last names starting with Z's.
Unfortunately, I mean, I'm just gonna say it for the sake of simplicity. Unfortunately, I feel like alphabetically works. Only because councils are going to be changing. And then if. Otherwise, then when someone, because all of us can agree, just sit where you want. But the next council that comes in may not be as agreeable. So we have to put something down so that it doesn't have to continuously be revisited. Like if we say alphabetically, but like you and, you and David want to swap or something, I don't care. You know.
Seniority would be something that would continue on as well.
Yeah, or seniority. Yeah, that's fine too. So. Yeah, I don't care. You guys decide.
What other committees are you gonna take me off of?
Oh, no. So do you guys have a? So I, things so we can move on?
Yeah, I just, maybe we suggest moving Michael. To the end and we just divvy up the council between the two sides and see how that goes. And I don't care on the alphabetical or seniority.
For, for, for name tagging purposes, it's helpful to know where you all would like to be.
How about draw straws every week?
I'm gonna pick for you.
Let's just do seniority.
We can certainly do seniority.
Is that? Or what? Guys, speak up, because I don't care. I don't honestly don't care either, so.
So in my experience, it alternated, so it would be a pro tem case where, where Frank is. And then it would be Rusty.
And Robert.
Robert. And then Catherine and then Frank and Dave, Frank and David.
What do you guys want to do?
I mean, seniority makes it easy. I mean. I think seniority would work. But I don't.
That would be a lifetime shift for me.
My last name is N, so I'm in the middle no matter what.
I don't care. We don't, it's only saving one seat difference.
Yeah, right.
So if I might be so bold, we will bring you over here and we'll do it by seniority, so we can.
There we go. All right.
And if you hate it, we'll revisit it. I almost put this one at the end for this reason, because I need one. So it's a simple.
That I can sneak in late through the side door and no one would even know.
We knew this one would take a long time. I initially had it at the end. All right.
Right, this would be a long discussion. Okay.
Well, it's only six twenty-one, we're doing okay.
All right.
There's nothing, there's no.
And they get harder as we go on.
The next one's easy to see.
Here we go. Oh, Ashley did throw it. Whoops, slippery, it's brand new. There it goes. Sarah and I were joking that I'd throw stuff at her when I needed to slide it, and I actually literally did. So. We have language in here, this, thank you. Other duties is assigned. We have language being very, very prescriptive about when breaks are taken, how breaks are taken. And we, this, the second item on here, we don't adhere to, I have a feeling we'll not adhere to it here in the next twenty-three minutes. So.
Sometimes we don't have time.
Sometimes we don't have time, exactly. And then there's also a separate provision, it's right after the first one about how many people we can cram in this room. And we, we will not overfill the room.
Yeah, is that, it's already a rule.
Yeah, we, we, we take it, we take it serious. We pushed it a few times, but not many. And so our proposal, I think, is just to strike all of this and replace it with blank space.
Yeah, because even the fire chief will say. He doesn't go by number. He goes by whether there's a way for people to get out. And so we always leave ways and paths, but he doesn't ever count.
Okay. I don't really care, so. If somebody says they need a break, we can take a break and just be like, guys, I really need a break. I mean, I don't mind having to check in at nine, because otherwise I'll just keep going. So.
I would leave a check in. But not make it a mandatory thing or, or state that there shall be taken. I would just, a check in at the two hour mark.
Yeah.
For a break.
Maybe taken.
Maybe taken, right. Something simple like that.
Or just be adult and run to the restroom really quick and come back and keep the meeting going.
I know, I wish, I mean, I kind of feel like, yeah, go, you gotta go, we're all adults.
Now, now is the check gonna be a visual check or a verbal check? If you see somebody squirming in their seat, is that like a clue?
Yeah.
So if, if, if we do a check at nine, do we, do we need to have it codified in your rules and procedures?
I think we're, I think we can handle it ourselves.
Yeah.
The only thing that complicates from what I read in this is that you shall be on the dais. You, that's part of the deal is you can't leave. In the rules, it says you can't leave. So if you gotta do a break and there's nothing mandatory, do we change that other rule so that this one?
Does it say that in there?
Yeah, it does. It says you can't leave the dais.
Yeah, you can't, you don't want to change the chart.
I don't know.
Charter, it's, it's.
It's not a charter, it's in our, in our rules, I read it here. It's in this.
That's different. We're just talking about leaving.
Somebody have the reference for that, we can strike that too. Somebody have the reference for that. We can strike that too. We already do.
Well, I think, for example, I think the one of the big, the big deal was, uh, uh, you're in quasi judicial. They don't want you, uh, leaving. I mean, that was like one of the specifics that they gave about it, but somewhere in here it tells you about all that.
I think that's reasonable. I mean, a quasi judicial, because you're, you're judging us there.
I mean, so I, I think you just put a line in here that just says you may take a break at nine o'clock if you, however you want to word that.
Fine, yeah, it's good.
And just one sentence and be done.
Yeah, we can.
And then that solves your problem.
Yeah. Oh, then, yeah, okay.
Alright, and you're okay if we strike the fire?
Yeah.
Strike the fire?
Oh yeah, strike the fire thing, yeah.
What fire?
We didn't start the fire.
The capacity.
The strike the capacity rule.
Oh, the capacity, okay, yeah, yeah.
And yes, if you need to use the restroom, just go.
Just go, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you need a hall.
When I was reading this, I was thinking, Mayor, Mayor, I just gotta go. Can I go? But you have to ask the mayor.
Alright.
Thanks, mate.
Okay. Um, time limit for public comment. Again, this is one of those things that's just kind of formalizing what the relatively recent practice has been. Um, this section limits public comment to five minutes. We've been doing three. In that same section, council can lift that time, default time limit. Um, do you all want to replace that five with three?
I think three's been working well.
Three is plenty.
Yeah, I think, I feel like if once somebody has something more to say that's substantive that they need to get across to us, it's gonna take more than three minutes, then they should get on the agenda and come speak, rather than do it in that capacity, because there's other ways to do it. You know?
The problem with that is they're wanting to also limit the presentation to three minutes in what they're putting here tonight.
Well, that's what I mean. So if it's a presentation that's over three minutes, it should be, and they could get on the, on the agenda for new business, like anybody else that comes here that wants to do a, a presentation with us, like we'll probably get signed on five G, right? So the HR green, if they want to come and give their presentation, they, they get on the agenda for that, so. I, I want to hear what the system has to say, but they want to say it.
No.
I don't, I'd rather them have something substantive where they put something together to come up and speak and get on the agenda. But if they just want to rant for three minutes, well, okay too. But if you really want something substant, you know, substantial, then get on the agenda. But what's the difference in three, you know, three or five?
We get longer than three minutes for presentations.
Right.
That are on the agenda. But for.
Yeah, they're on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
And new.
Yeah, and then.
But also, Mayor, the mayor can make exceptions.
Right.
And oftentimes I at least wait for people to finish their train of thought, even if they are over three minutes.
And then new business isn't tied to the three minutes. That's however long.
Right.
More or less need, so.
It, it's, it says public comment.
Yeah, so it goes, so there's the public comment and the public comment on agenda items are two different things. Well, I don't think it has to say, cause Chair ultimately has control over the meeting period. That is. So, um, but the three minutes gives the, the three minutes gives the public know what they, what they have for public comment. Everyone's, in my opinion, all of the public that has presented and they've been under that three minute time limit, they've done a really good job. So, and the people that really just needed to kind of finish, I, I let them finish and I, none of you have been upset by that, really, so.
No, because it's fair, like both sides, if they're for or against you.
No, I don't care what they're saying.
They start to go.
Yeah.
Really, they're going crazy or they're going really long.
Yeah.
So.
And I, I'll look at Jeff as well, but my, my experience in study of cities, three minutes is pretty standard. Jeff.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with three minutes.
Okay, sounds like we have consensus on this one. Alright. That one wasn't so bad.
And I also give people time, like, cause you can tell when they're really nervous or they're getting emotional, so I let them. I'm not gonna cut them off, cause they need a second to either catch their breath or, you know, get, gain their courage. So.
Did we, I just have a question that I've seen happen. When we've had hearings with lots of public comments, we've had people that have said, I'd like to defer my, all my, all the public comments to this person.
All my time?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so do we have a provision for that or it doesn't matter?
I thought we did, I said you can't.
But, you know, like someone could take twenty-seven minutes, cause they're using
someone else's time.
Yeah.
I think that gets too tricky to keep track of.
Sure. Also, look at the purpose, you know, purpose is to get a message across.
Yep.
And we, as a council, have been instructed not to engage with that person at the podium. So that is their time to, to tell us what they need to tell us. So, you know, I, I don't know. I think that's, I think it's reasonable.
I don't, I don't mind that. Uh, I, if somebody finds that there's a spokesperson who wants to cover their point and they're better at it or whatever.
Oh, no, 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 I mean.
Is that what you're saying?
I think it's fine that we give them three minutes. I think that sharing like where you're, where you're, um.
Sharing time.
Yeah, uh, you know, you're giving your time, your, your, what do they call it in Congress when you, uh?
Uh, I yield to.
My time.
I'm yield my times. Is there a problem with them?
Yeah, I think if they have something they need to talk about for thirty minutes and they should go ahead and get on the agenda. So that we are prepared to, to have that discussion. And then maybe that could be a discussion, if you've got to talk for that long. But I think that the point of this is, is to hear them. Not to talk back, it's just to listen. And I don't think if I'm gonna listen for twenty-seven minutes, then, then I think they should be on the agenda.
You're thinking some, um, not, eight people are gonna defer their time to to one person. Is that what you're thinking? You've seen that? Have you seen?
I absolutely.
Oh, have you?
Absolutely.
Okay. I have not seen that, so. I have not seen.
You weren't here for Walmart or for a few other.
Oh, okay.
So you P issues.
Okay.
And if I may, but even the BOA.
So, 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 so just on that point then, if what you're saying, and I like what you're saying, it should become an agenda items, how does the public get enough of a say so to have it on the agenda?
Yeah, two of you can put it on there.
So they're gonna have to convince two people on council to have their issue on.
Yeah.
That's.
I mean, we represent the people, so they can convince two of us that they want to be on. I think that's fair.
I'm fine with something, yeah. And will we let them know that?
Um, they would have to stay tuned until, well, I, I guess if you wanted to, at some point during the meeting, say you want it. I mean, council reports, that's what reports is for. Um, if you want to have an agenda and come back and two of you are in agreement, someone could, David could say, oh yes, I think we should discuss such and such an item and you could say, yes, I agree and we'll bring that back.
And then it's done right then. Or we could just let the citizens know, you know, however, through an announcement, you know, the text message, something that goes out to let them know. If, you know, these are the rules, just so you know, and if you feel like you do need more time than that, talk to your council members. You know, I would prefer that actually, that they come and talk to us, because, you know, they, it seems like there's not, uh, it's not happening like it should.
Yeah.
It only happens when somebody's mad about. And I think that, yeah, if we could just announce it to them to say, hey, we, the three minutes thing is to get your point across. We're here to listen and not engage. But if you would like to be on the agenda, please contact two of your council members to agree. And I, I mean, agree or not agree, I imagine two council members will let them come and speak.
Um, and this provision in the rules and procedures does allow, again, for the suspension of the rule. If count the majority of council wishes that to be. So you also have that out as well. If you really like what you're hearing and they tell, tell me how great you all are and you want to extend it more, um, cause it happens all the time, as we know, you can do that. You have, you can vote on it and extend it.
Um, I haven't seen that one either, by the way.
And it does make, it does make an allowance for a proxy, um, for someone to speak for an individual, if they have a disability prohibiting written, uh, the, the disability prohibiting a speaker from speaking, they can have someone speak in their place.
Fair enough.
So. Um, so I, I think we're okay on that one.
Yeah.
Alright, so this one, this is a five parter. Stay with me. We were talking about presentations. And so there's, there's a couple of sections governing presentations. Um, these, these are all, these are all part and parcel of the same thing. They can all be consistent with one another. Um, the, the bottom one is kind of a standalone. I'll, I'll take that back. Um, we'll get to that. So, uh, if you do have a presentation, just making a public comment, um, under section six, for items not on the agenda, uh, you, you can make a presentation, however that might look. Uh, you have three minutes and we're not going to allow you to do slides. Doing slides slows things down. Uh, someone brings a flash drive and they have a virus on it. We don't want to infect our network. And so, um, what someone can do is leave flyers for you all. Um, so we, we would recommend codifying that. Um, standalone presentations, as we were just saying, can be added to the agenda without a time limit, a reasonable, uh, time would be nice, but, um, we can add that to the agenda. Uh, as we have and we do and we will tonight, under section three, um, as long as folks are from Teller County, we've told people no, because they're not.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, there's still room for those presentations, um, just to further clarify. Um, and we had also said back in May, uh, no, if there's a section three presentation, just to clarify, uh, there's no action to be taken by council at that same meeting. If you want to make an action, that needs to come back under new business at the following meeting.
Good.
So we, we think that's a good idea as well. Uh, cause there's no, uh, council is forced to act like that without deliberation and conversing with constituents. Uh, fourth is that, um, well, we, if there are presentations, we put them under new business, um, we should have a staff report so that you all can be, um, better apprised of what's going on. That kind of goes with number three. And then number five, um.
You kind of, you kind of blew across that one.
Sorry.
So someone's doing a section three presentation.
Mm-hmm.
And you're saying you're gonna do a staff report on that presentation? So does that mean they're presenting?
So.
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, okay, let me, you're right. My apologies. So if somebody does want you to make a decision and they want to have a presentation to convince you to do so, we will put that under section ten, which is new business. And you will have an advance, um, report in the packet to accompany the, the decision that you will be asked to make.
So it comes after a three, so set, a section three's been presented. Uh, we, we decide to put it on under new business, then you formulate that over the next two weeks and it comes to us in effect.
Correct.
Alright.
And if someone just wants to come into cold with a presentation under section ten and a decision, um, we, we will exercise our judgment on whether to allow that to happen or not. But, uh, yeah, generally, one week, uh, tonight, you would come under section three with the presentation you make an ask, and then we'd bring that back on the sixteenth for a decision from you all.
And then if an ask, just so I'm clear, so if an ask is made, uh, that doesn't give, that doesn't give the asker a right to a place on the agenda, the future two members of the council have to decide that they agree, correct?
Um, as.
Or I could make that decision.
For Michael.
Or the attorney.
Oh, I see. Okay, alright.
Certainly.
So you're not left out, Joe.
Excuse me.
You're not left out.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Jeff will.
Bravo, bravo. Bring it back.
Go for it, Jeff.
Okay. So, um, before I go to number five, do, do those first four sound okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So number five is something we've, we've kind of battered around. This is a newer one. I, I don't think this came up back in May. Um, wait a minute, I think I'm getting my things mixed up. Oh, well, okay. Um, if you, I'm, I'm thinking ahead of the next one. I'm sorry, there's so many of these things. Um, if a council member wants to make a PowerPoint, PowerPoint, not, not just a presentation, but a PowerPoint, the presentation must be provided to the clerk, so we can include it in the packet, so you all can consider it as material, um, before the council meeting. Instead of just impromptu, hey, here it is.
Yeah.
Michael, I wouldn't limit it to just PowerPoint, because remember the one time I had that presentation was in Excel. So I would just say.
Great graphic means, yeah, any kind of a product.
Visual aid.
Yes, yeah.
You like that? Alright.
Cause also if you just throw it up there, it can't be included, right, in the agenda, in the minutes, because it's not an official city document.
Correct.
So if you have something and you think it's important enough to share, it ought to be in the packet, so we can all review it.
And so if we wanted it in the packet from council members, Suzanne, when would you ideally like that from them?
So it's a week before the council meeting, so Thursday.
Okay.
Thursday prior to the council meeting.
Okay, so by the end of business?
Yeah. Five P M. Thursday.
Okay, so.
So that brings up a really good question. Um, I have found it particularly uh, frustrating that we make all these changes, we get our packet, and then we make all these changes, rush, 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 rush up until council meets. Uh, classic example was the S T Rs, we got the changes and changes. We didn't have twenty-four hours on some of those. So is there something in place here for us not to feel like people can just cram stuff into, changes into the, into the agenda that causes us not to be able to digest it? That, to me, that's the biggest issue. You don't have time to sit and digest this. Um, so is there some, something that guides us for the inclusions that happen between that six days and when we meet?
I think it depends, cause if you're talking about like visual stuff, that should just be done, but it's hard when it's just dialogue amongst all of us.
Not dialogue, it's actual, uh, documentation that we're discussing, ordinances we're taking and we're, we're making changes to in that six, in that six days. And then expecting council to have a fully informed process of all of those changes that occurred. And we've done it several times and I don't know about the rest of you, but I just find that's really pushing, pushing a stress into the process that really doesn't allow us to justice to deliberating on it.
I think it makes sense. I mean, I get it. I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
I also get what Mary's saying. We're, we're, we're talking right now about presentations, about you coming up as a council member and giving a presentation.
Right.
But what you're talking about is probably something we should talk about.
That's, I'm just bringing it up.
It doesn't have to do with this in particular, but I agree, we, we do need to talk about that, cause cause in fairness, if we have to rush last minute stuff and you don't get time to review, you know, I don't want to give you that excuse on council and say, well, I have twenty-four hours, I can do this. I'm booting this way.
Right.
I'd rather.
And have the minimum of forty-eight hours for public.
Twenty-four.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
If you, council member want to put something on the agenda, you can do it in twenty-four hours before.
Well, that, that's to put something on the agenda. That's why we're talking now, we're talking three different things.
Yeah, we're only talking about visual presentations.
Right.
If you, if you have colors and rainbows and unicorns that you want to show the world.
I'm sure.
Try to.
Are they all different timeframes?
My point, exactly my point in this.
You may have a visual presentation to go with the item on agenda. So we need to figure out a timeframe for stuff like that, because if it's only twenty-four hours, I've had numerous council members have twenty-four hours and still say that's not enough time or they weren't prepared. So you guys need to think of a timeframe then.
No, I agree. Let's, then we can apply it to all things. And then if we can't get it in that forty eight hours or whatever we decide, then we'll push to the next, it'll get put on the agenda for the next meeting.
So there's two different things we're talking about. We're talking about the agenda and we're talking about the packet. And believe it or not, they're two separate things. Because the packet takes a lot of preparation, um, to prepare. You'll get packets as council knows two hundred and eighty pages. This one is a short package, right?
Thirty one.
But there's a lot of work that goes on the staff's part into preparation of the packet. So the packet, I feel strongly about that that Thursday be the hard stop for any packet items. Periodically, we've revised the agenda. Like we have to take something off or all of a sudden something comes up and we have to add it. And then I send you a separate email and say, here's the revised packet, here's the addition to the materials. Um, and I would ask for direction from council what the hard stop for that would be. Um, lots of times it's you guys that are giving me the stuff to change the agenda. So it's, it's really what you guys would like to do.
I think forty eight hours.
Forty eight or seventy two, one of the two.
Well, I, I still think the original point here on the presentation should be the Thursday before.
Oh, yeah, the presentation, for sure. If you're, if a council member is going to do a slideshow, they can't, that night, they can't hand me the flash drive. That's what we're saying.
Right.
We need to put it so as Mayor, as Mayor LeBarre said, so it can go in the packet, be part of the minutes. I needed the Thursday before.
Yeah.
So that's, that, that covers this one. Then there's the two other items.
I think forty eight hours is, is probably sufficient.
Well, I just wanted to take that back, David, just as an example, when we did the definitions. Did we have enough clarity to get those six days before the meeting? I don't think we did. I think we were working on that. Just as an example of one of those presentations.
Well, well, that's, well, that's, that's what I'm saying. Like I said, we're, we're talking three things now instead of this one, but regardless.
Yeah, yeah.
You're right, that, that, there should, we should figure out that time because a week is probably not something that we need to add if we want to add something short, but we want to do a regular presentation. We should give you a week, but like he says, what if we're up against a timeline because we have a major, you know, thing going on? And some, and, and, and we have, still have time to talk to these folks, uh, and, and amongst our council members in front of the public, right? I mean, are you going to cut them off at a week and say, yep, sorry, I know you found this out on Friday?
Never have.
You can't do a presentation.
I always.
Because it could affect any of us for any reason, for any reason, right?
We've always followed, um, the city manager and I, we've revised the agenda up until twenty four hours prior.
So then is there a workaround to that to where you, so for instance, you're inside a week, you do a presentation, takes two council members to get something on the agenda. You're saying you're locking the agenda down a week prior?
Twenty four hours prior.
Right.
The packet is a week.
I know, I make it a point. You're right.
Okay.
So my, so the point is, Robert, is that we would still be able to have done that under the rules. So, so having anything you can get in for that section a week prior, that's fair. If you can't, and you got another council member, in our case, we had two, right? So we still up at twenty four hours could get that in there regardless.
And sometimes council will.
Be okay.
But maybe we should extend that twenty four hours and make it forty eight. I think twenty four is too short notice. I, I really do. I think twenty four is too short notice. It, uh, too much chaos is my experience. Too much chaos happens in that last twenty four hours on repeated issues.
And what do you guys think about that forty eight hours?
Well, it's, it's a two edged sword. In my opinion, because I, I think making it longer to forty eight is probably better because if a council member throws something out that's contentious, then the, and if that twenty four hour mark, well, it's not fair to an opposing opinion to not have any kind of time to research and, and have a rebuttal or maybe want to add something to the packet as a rebuttal to, you know, something that's proposed. I, I just think it's a two edged sword. We have to be very careful about that.
Well, I, I think you just want to keep in mind, if you want to do a visual aid presentation, then it should be X amount of time. So everyone has I have the ability to know what's going to be on it. And the city has the official law on their side to then publish it as city business. If you just want something on the agenda that you guys want to talk about, you can put it on any time as a council member of two within the twenty four hours.
Right.
This was only meant to be for visually.
Yeah.
So, and if you need visual aid to go with your argument, I'm pretty sure you already know what you want your argument to be. So I don't know that a week is going to devastate your ability to to give that argument. If you really need unicorns to proceed the argument.
Well, the point is though, is that if you do need that, and maybe you don't, but if you do, and we're in a contentious issue and it's a vote is coming up that week. You can't push that presentation you want to do past the vote week because then you wouldn't be able to do your presentation.
Right.
So I, so I get it. But I think it should be, get it into, get it in a week like this, like we're doing here. And then maybe you do give forty eight hours. I don't know, so that other council members can see if you are going to do something because you need to, for whatever reason. When we can't predict the future, today that might help me and tomorrow that might help Jeff. I don't know. So.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I've never used a visual presentation. I actually don't think council should be doing it. I think you have a point, just make your point.
Yeah.
Because you have to remember what we put up there then has to be debated as to whether they included as official city business. And they can't do that if they don't have like that weak timeline to do it. So then it's just up there. Now they have no control of it. The media can, the Wild West. And it's not really what the title is, and it creates all this conundrum. So personally, me, I say there should be no visual presentation by council because everybody screws up and does weird things. And then it gets out there in a weird way that wasn't the original intent, but since you guys like hearts and rainbows and things. Go with your discussion. I think a reasonable amount of time, though, for everyone to review it is important. And either you have the caveat of this is not official city business and will not be provided to the media by the city. Or if you want it to be, then it needs to be the weak timeline.
Kind of it's the two council members being able to get something on agenda, though.
Really doesn't.
No, no, it only, you still have twenty four hours. You just. I've sat on council for five years and never once needed a visual presentation to anything I've said.
So you can still up to twenty four hours, put something on the agenda. It's just not necessarily with unicorns and rainbows.
Well, maybe I want unicorns.
I know you do.
Yeah.
And that's fine.
So I'm just saying, I wouldn't limit us to not allow ourselves to do it.
Yeah.
If you want to make a point, sometimes that's drives your point home.
You're true, right? You each have a right to share your point of view. You have to present it to council however you feel you can most effectively present it. I have no desire to limit any of you on that.
I agree that you should be able to present anything you want up there, but I want it a week ahead of time so that an opposing position might have time to review it and prepare their own rebuttal. You can't just throw it at a, a, another council member for the first time, twenty four, forty eight hours in advance. It's just not fair. We, we, we have our. But there needs to be a.
And, and reactions. Rusty, I don't have any problem with that at all. The secondary point is, so let, we just go past that. It's got to have your presentation in six days. I'm fine with that. My concern is we get revisions to, um, to ordinances within twenty four, less than twenty four hours on some cases, and those are significant. And it, I think that that timeframe is way too short. I think it should be at least forty eight hours and it shouldn't. And if we've got to extend it, if we can't figure out a, an ordinance in the timeframe there, I, you know, we'd say first reading and then public comment or whatever else. It's like, if we can't solve it, if it's too contentious, we can't solve it. I don't think we should be trying to rush it into a box because, oh, we have to get it done now. I think we should do it right.
But we don't have to. That's why we can extend it to the next agenda. Like we don't have to make the decision that day.
I, I only.
We have that power as well.
I, I totally get that, too. I thought that was my first thought was, well, if that's the case, then we could, two customers, we could just say, we'll push it to the next agenda, except that when we have public notices or votes, we got to stick to that schedule unless you want to change that public notice and go through that process and move it again.
We can.
Guys are good with that.
Sometimes that happens.
Sometimes.
Sometimes it happens.
And sometimes it.
Like I said, I don't care.
Yeah.
I was just making a point that.
Yeah.
Sometimes you need that.
So we got nowhere.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the whole, change it to visual aid and just do the Thursday prior to the meeting. Close of business in the twenty four or forty eight hours, like, I don't have an issue with.
Yeah, I'm fine with, I'm fine with asking for one week for visual aid.
Yeah.
To be included in the packet.
The packet, yeah.
Okay, so I. We've already solved the, the convenience break thing, but it is six fifty.
Yeah.
Yes, so we, we do have, uh, four, I think, four remaining items. Um, they're, they're fairly important. We will bring them back.
Well, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I don't know, maybe not, but if we could just finish it after the council meeting tonight, can we do that?
That's up to you all. We certainly can.
And then we get it done?
Uh, I, I won't be.
Or you won't?
I'm, I'm driving California tomorrow morning early, so I'm.
Okay.
It is only a thirty one P.
Well, can we?
We may have some notice.
Yeah, oh, well, that, that's why I asked. I wasn't, I.
We haven't noticed that the continuation.
Okay, should we just wrap it up at the next council then? I mean, I hate to drag it out.
We have a continuation of the work session.
Yeah. We, I mean, we don't have a work session for the sixteen.
We do not.
We can just finish this on the sixteen.
Are you guys all okay with that? That we just continue it on the sixteen?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay. Right.
Do we make a motion for that or anything?
Not to work.
I should make good progress. Nice work. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. Well, we convene at seven.